Third, seven o'clock, council meeting. If you have a phone, please turn it off and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence to be observed and we'd like everybody to think about Judge James Kinglin, who passed away during this moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Decker?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Domingo?
Here. Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers' comments? Are there any comments this evening from the council? Yes.
I have two. The first one is for Mary Lynn Harper, superintendent of our schools. Michael Culver, troop leader from our Boy Scouts. They are the Red Eagles, number one team. We had a day, ten-hour session in Grass State at Camp Tukanka.
To Tukanka.
And it was a flight school and it's been thirteen years since an Albion Cub Scout troop has been at this level. They were number one in character, as described by the people who put it on, academics, sight performances, and these sight performances were archery, BB gun, bow and arrow, Albion College Nature Center, Department of Natural Resources, building fires and cooking. The key for me being asked to help chaperone was the academic level that they could respond to when Albion College E&amp;R, they knew that the bat could see. I got it wrong. I thought the bat was blind, but I guess they go by some kind of sounds. And several other things about the eagle. They are truly learning at the school and some of the teachers that were mentioned should be applauded because I was so proud of how these kids in this atmosphere. And being a troop from our town, some of the expectations had some, some myths attached to them and we exceeded all of them. I want to thank Mrs. Harper and Mike Culver for sponsoring, supporting Cub Scout troops. We had eleven kids and we went three days, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, yes, of last week and it was wonderful. I want to thank them. Secondly, I'd like to thank the Parents Teachers Organization and especially the county commissioner, I think his name, well, anyway, he's on the school board, who put on the extra playground equipment to extend the playground. And they got a thing that goes up probably, I don't know, eight, I don't know, thirteen, fourteen feet, almost climbed to the top, but the kids are going to enjoy it. We had an open house this weekend. I want to just thank the Parents and Teachers Organization who financed it and also physically came and put it into play. Thank you very much.
Yes, Andy?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to let the folks know, last Tuesday evening, Star Commonwealth announced their new CEO, Elizabeth Carey, at President Ditzler's house. I want to thank President Ditzler for providing that, a wonderful, warm environment. The city council was all invited to attend and many of us were able to go. And it was a lovely evening of connecting people and activists in town with other programs and with each other, so I thought it was very productive. Secondly, the Build Albion Fellows will be having a basketball tournament this weekend, Saturday morning. Sign-up is at nine-thirty or so in the morning at Holland Park. We're looking for folks who want to play some basketball and we'll accept pretty much anybody who wants to come. We now have four divisions. We have a young ballers program for kids under the age of seven where they can work on skill development and have some games and relay races and things like that. Then their next age group is from seven to ten, then eleven to fourteen, and then fifteen to eighteen, and then nineteen and above. So we have an adult group, so if people are interested, please show up at Holland Park on Saturday morning at nine-thirty for sign-up and registration. The rec department is also organizing this, so the Build Albion Fellows are staffing it, but the rec department is organizing it, so.
Yes, Cheryl?
Andy, what's the cost?
So, team costs are five dollars for a team, seven people on the team, max. It's co-ed, so feel free to bring boys and girls out to play on a team.
Okay.
If you have any questions, see the rec department or you can see me.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Cheryl has another.
As was mentioned, we join in offering our condolences to the family of Judge James Kingsley. And in case you did not receive the email from earlier today, the visitation is on Friday, August seventh, from two to five PM at the Craig Kemp Funeral Home at 723 Old Twenty-seventh North in Marshall. And the celebration of his life will be on Saturday, August eighth, at eleven AM at the Goodrich Chapel at Albion College.
Thank you. If there are no more, we'll move on to presentations. A, the Big Reed Parade and Music in the Park. Andy, please. Your full name, please, and address.
My name is Madeline Brury and I live on 201 Half Huron Street. And I'm from Albion College. I'm the new Assistant Director of Community Programming. So I work for the Build Albion Fellows and for the Big Reed. So thank you so much for allowing us to update you on the Big Reed. As many of you know, earlier this summer, the National Endowment for the Arts named Albion one of seventy-five big Reed cities nationwide. The NEA has granted us eight thousand five hundred dollars. So that, along with more matching funds from local organizations, all of that money will support the Big Reed programming throughout the month of October. We are pleased to report that the circle of collaborators continues to expand and our partners now include Albion College, the National Endowment for the Arts, Albion Public Schools, the Albion District Library, the Albion Community Foundation, the Albion Homer United Way, the Albion Rotary Club, the City of Albion, the Beaum Theater, Kids and Stuff Children's Museum, Kids at Hope, the Sister City Committee, the Mayor's Youth Council, Albion Housing Commission, the Forks Senior Center, and the list is still growing. So these many partners will make it possible for us to bring a range of programming to Albion during the month of October. Those kinds of programming will include book discussions, service projects, concerts, panel discussions, films, art exhibits, and speakers, including National Book Award-winning author M.T. Anderson, and we hope Coretta Scott King Award-winning illustrator Christopher Myers. Our many sponsors will also enable us to provide copies of our Big Reed book, Ursula Le Guin's A Wizard of Earthsea, to Albion residents free of charge. We will start distributing those books in September at the Farmer's Market and the Festival of the Forks. I do have copies for the council tonight, though. One of our most important events, though, will be our kickoff event, which will be on October third. It will begin with a Big Reed Parade that starts here at City Hall and proceeds west on Cass Street to the beautiful Holland Park. And there you will find Detroit circus performers, face painters, live and we hope amplified music, food vendors, local organizations, arts and crafts, and more. So this event will offer our community an opportunity to come together and enjoy the magic of Albion and one another. So for most people, the Big Reed is coming in October, but some have been preparing for it now for a while. So since the middle of June, a group of thirteen local eighth, ninth, and tenth graders have been meeting weekly to discuss Le Guin's novel. Those leaders are Akaya Ridley, Avian Washington, Cassie Porter, Sedriana March, Danielle Washington, Ian Lee, Isabella Halick, Keijanique Hill, Lorenz Hill, Lea Williams, Lily Miller, Shai Teriana Stram, and Tariq Stram. They've also been working with Albion College volunteers, who are Elena Brinker, Alexis Tilery, Ricky Swinton, Sharla Ryder, and Victoria Delapia. All of these young people have given their time and energy to the Big Reed and have come to our weekly meetings with open hearts and open minds. Next week, these students and volunteers will attend a week-long workshop at Albion College, where the students will learn and hone their skills as discussion leaders, so they will be ready to lead fully half of the community-wide discussions that we will have on the novel during the month of October. So as a way of closing, we would like to invite the city council, the mayor, and the city manager to come celebrate the achievements of these wonderful students thus far at an event that will take place a week from Friday. Please join us on August fourteenth at noon at 501 East Michigan Avenue, which is President Maury Ditzler's house, to help us honor and celebrate the work of these young people. Any questions?
So noon on the fourteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
What time is that on the fourteenth?
Noon.
Twelve noon.
Twelve noon.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Next presentation is from the Lions Club Update by Mary Slater.
Hi, Mary Slater, 517 East Michigan Avenue, and I tell you, every time I come here, I am just, we live in the best city anywhere, don't we? I mean, listen to these things that are going on. And I just want to point out that some of the kids that are on the Big Reed Committee are kids that went to France. So, you know, the wheel keeps turning and all of these pieces fit together in this terrific place. It's good to live in Albion. Anyway, to the Lions. The Lions year runs from July first to June thirtieth of the following year. So what I'm here tonight is to present the year-end report of 2014-2015, just to let you all know what the Albion Lions Club does. With a membership of less than twenty, we've been able to accomplish a lot of things. So the recipients of our funds, most of it goes to the Fountain Clinic in Marshall, and they provide eye exams and help people get glasses. They go through a screening process, they have a copay, and then they're referred there. So we gave over four hundred dollars to the Fountain Clinic. Other projects go through the district and state Lions Clubs. We also contribute to the Albion Health and Wellness Action Team, to the Sister City Kids Trip, to Albion Fireworks, to a family Thanksgiving, to the Forks Senior Center, to the Albion Homer United Way. And we also contributed to the Beaum Theater and through our joint connection with the Nuwazila Wa Baie Lions Club, we planted seven trees in Victory Park. And I want to say that since the beginning of our club in July of 2007 through June of 2015, the Albion Lions Club has collected seventeen thousand dollars and donated sixteen thousand to projects. I think we're doing pretty well.
Great.
And if anybody would like to join, we'd love to have you. You can see me or Maurice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Excuse me.
Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening? See none. Consent calendar. A is approval for regular session minutes from July twentieth, 2015.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Yes.
On page five of five, comments were received from Rose Bradley. Her address is on Reed 12th Parker Street? That's not correct. It's Arthur Street.
Arthur.
I missed him something someplace.
What was the, what was the problem?
To approve them, you know, I saw an error. I just want to make sure that we have the correct address, that's all, which is proper.
Yeah, and the citizens' comment on page five?
Five of five.
She lives on Arthur Street, not Parker Street.
Okay. Are there any more corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passed. B, approval of a special study session for July twenty-seventh, 2015.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, proposed. Passed. Items for individual discussion. Request approval, resolution 2015-21, City Inspection Services Agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? There's a couple of changes that, I have the right one. Okay, that we would like to do on the first page down at the bottom, where it says, "No other compensation shall be paid unless agreed upon by both parties," the word "council" will be entered into there.
Where is that?
Where it says "both parties." I'm all in there. Cullen?
If I may, the way that it, this is how it will read, is the final line of paragraph five able to read. No other compensation shall be paid unless agreed upon by both parties in writing and approved by city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next page, item six, will be entered, combo as well. How did you do that, Cullen?
Final sentence of paragraph six, A, will read, "This agreement may be extended upon mutual agreement of the parties. Be a written agreement and with city council approval."
Okay.
No.
Yes.
Just one question. So the first corrections you made, is that, are you talking about actually a change in the, the actual rate? Or are you talking about actual?
No, this is, this is in the event that they, the compensation outside of the appendix that's, that's already attached. So those are the standard rates that they charge, the permits and other, and this is the, if they're going to get compensation outside of the norm.
Right.
It'd be a written agreement approved by council.
Yeah. So that would mean even if it was?
The annual base is already wrote in there. They can't change the rate. But is it every other year? Is that what that means?
Yeah.
By two dollars. That's on the front page.
So now, so I guess my question is if it's something that's not in the appendix, but that it's like a, like a?
An unusual item that's not listed in the listing of fees.
Okay. Okay, even if it's like really, really low?
That what?
Even if like the charge is really low? Like, I don't know.
They set the rates.
Okay.
If it's something that's not part of this agreement?
Okay.
It has to come to the council for approval before it's approved.
Correct.
That's all it means.
Is that right, Glenn?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that is for the council's, we've never had to go ask for any additional funding other than what's there.
Thank you. Any further questions? See none? Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval of resolution 2015-22, Albion Housing Commission?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions?
Explanation from the city manager concerning the resolution. Mayor and council, if you recall, at the special meeting that was held just about a week ago with the Albion Housing Commission, wondered if the request that came out of that meeting, some clarification relative to how issues can be brought forward to the Albion Housing Commission. And this resolution pretty much identifies that protocol and it indicates that, one, the Albion Housing Commission is requested to provide an annual report, which is required by state law, and that the Albion City Council affirms that their official communications to the Housing Commission will come either directly from the mayor, the city manager, city attorney, or action approved by the majority of the city council members.
Comment?
With all understanding of the resolution, I support the resolution. However, the buck stops with the mayor on the selection of the person who will go into the, see it as the commission of Albion Housing Commission by charter. Therefore, the character, content, and the policies and procedures that these individuals put in place, the buck will come back to the mayor. If anyone who is in a resident situation or who's outside of the resident have any questions, all of these inquiries above and beyond the protocol of making a resident complaint, if there's any situation where you have a problem with commissioners, it should go directly to the mayor, not Councilman Barnes. Councilman Barnes will totally refer you to the mayor. If, as a resident living in that housing complex, I have the right to contact HUD, my senators, my representatives at both the state and local level, which I will continue to do if I can see that anything is being done outside of the policies of HUD. Thank you.
One correction to that statement. Any problems that they have at the Housing Commission goes to the Housing Board first before it comes to the mayor or the city manager or the council. It goes to their board first. Thank you. Any further questions? See none. Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request approval of resolution 2015-23, to approve the Big Reed Celebration of Holland Park and the use of sound application equipment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? See none? Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. D, report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Domingo. There's still a lot of exciting things going on and we're very excited about the Big Reed coming and all the festivities, especially around reading, that we'll all be able to participate in. And also, I want to remind you that we just received a notification today that one of the participants in the Big Reed and a number of our youth programs, Akaya Ridley, sent an email today indicating that the four-age Creative and Expressive Arts Program would like to extend an invitation to their performance on August eighteenth at seven PM sharp at the Beaum Theater. They're planning to accept donations at the door and they would really appreciate the support of the mayor and council in attending if you are able. Also, I would like to let you know, if you, if you recall, the Junior Optimists Club that recently started here, the first convention for, on a statewide basis, is coming up for the Optimists organization, and that's going to be August twenty-first, and it will be in Traverse City at the Great Wolf Lodge. Six of the participants have been identified to attend and they are engaging in a fundraising effort, so that we would appreciate any support that you can lend towards that. There's going to be a lot of leadership training in addition to a little bit of splashing, perhaps, but it's going to be a great opportunity for them. They will be officially presented with their Optimist banner and they will be involved with the other junior optimists as part of their board development training, so it'll be a great opportunity for them. We really appreciate your support. And Mayor Domingo's already made a significant contribution. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And how will donations be received?
You can bring them to my attention. If you're making a check, you can make it cityofalbion-joi, J-O-O-I.
For cash, you can just give to me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on it, Mayor Joe. I'm on it.
And also, I think it was mentioned earlier in regards to the groundbreaking today of the Oaklawn Dialysis Center, so we were there for the groundbreaking and we're very excited about this new development coming. And one of the things I do want to mention is they were very complimentary about our staff and the support that they received from our planning commission in particular, and especially John Tracy in trying to expedite and making sure that they had an unencumbered process. They were very appreciative of that, and so I just want to share that again because we do want Albion to be a great place to do business and we welcome new businesses here.
Okay.
And my last one, I want to remind everyone that we are changing our long-distance service to the telnet service. So on this Wednesday at ten AM, the phone system will be out of service, they say, for five minutes.
Yeah.
But for a very short period of time, so.
Never heard anything like that.
Yeah, I know.
I was going to say, is it over/under about five hours?
Yeah, so we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding for incoming outgoing calls that we will be down for a few minutes on Wednesday morning. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Future agenda items?
EDC report. We haven't had one of those in a while.
So you did? Yeah, that's a good point. EDC report?
EDC?
Yeah. Yeah.
Does that do?
It's supposed to be quarterly.
It's supposed to be quarterly.
Okay.
And I guess the other reason I was saying that, too, is because I remember when they made the presentation about the Dialysis Center, about opportunities to have people come in town, because you have to sit there for hours, so I think it'd be helpful to kind of talk about what we might do to.
Okay. Well, they probably have something to talk about with the motel.
I was going to say with the hotel.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Maurice?
Austin Avenue Abatement Updates. And the building that owned by the county, is that building owned by the county yet, that last one on East? Or still owned by private owners? Okay. An update on Austin Avenue, residents and the abatements.
And if I could just mention briefly, I did receive an update today, in fact, from Mr. Tracy, and I can share that with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
I was going to figure, bring up the possibility of a study group considering ordinances about dogs and not keeping them in lock cars, not leaving them in homes that no one's living there. There really isn't anything in the county or the state that addresses it at this time, and we're seeing quite a bit of heat stroke and situations where officers are having to pick up dogs that are being left at abandoned homes, where people are coming once or twice a week to feed them. So I didn't know if that was something that we might be able to talk about.
Okay. Anyone else? Donna?
Hi. Oh, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't forget that Jeff Lingard.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do anything like that.
Okay.
I've never forgotten anything, yeah, never. All councilmembers are present, so.
Are we doing a retreat in August or September regarding budgets and things? We should probably get that process started of at least organizing. Budget season's coming up, right?
I know.
I know, it snuck up on us last year. Let's not have it sneak up on us this year. I'm sorry, I just have to be the devil.
No, now's the time to do it, so. Citizens' comments. If there are no more comments from the council, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Name and address when you enter the podium, please.
Patricia West, 1514 Magnotta, Albion, Michigan. I'm here to address the issues of the deer on Beamer Street. I've lived on, at my address for forty-four years, and I have saw the change. We now have a standard, I don't know what you call a herd?
Herd.
Of eighteen deer.
Holy cow.
That they meet at the Grand Magnotta and Beamer. It's a little space. And it's getting really dangerous. I know we can't probably stop the deer, but there needs to be, I was thinking maybe a sign or something to let people know that they're crossing and running up and down the street. They cross at Cooper and Beamer.
Yeah.
And that's where they cross at. And it's getting very dangerous. I was just concerned about the children. We have a lot more foot traffic than we used to have in that area. This, that's the main thoroughway from Lincolnshire, some from Albion Housing and that side of the city.
Okay.
Maybe a sign to warn people, I almost got reared in two times. Because I was stopped because I go ten miles, but somebody whipped right around the corner and almost hit me because no one's aware of it. And it's really getting to be a dangerous situation. I'm really concerned about it.
So if we put a sign up there, no deer allowed, do you think the deer would?
Well, I don't know what, I don't know if they speak English or not, but I think to let people aware.
Yeah.
Because there's so much foliage now. It's pitch black. You have to use your bright.
And they're coming right out of the woods, right there.
They come right out of the woods on you. And walking, driving, bike riding, it's really getting to be dangerous. So I just wanted to let you know what's going on up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not going to tell them where you accosted me at the date?
At Fairpass.
Remember, a few years back, you came to me and I...
I sure did.
Went to our acting city manager, and at that time, I think he talked to you, John, about putting a sign up, but he felt that there was no need.
No need.
And then when you told me there was one on Austin Avenue, you started, you got on me, so there is a sign on Austin Avenue that says, "No deer." So I'm hoping that we can work with our city manager and John and get you...
It's just to warn people. Slow down. Look, because it's nothing on both sides after you leave the little plaza, except for the car place, and right in there, all the way down to Cooper, and then all the way down, period. They're in my yard, they run it up our streets, but I know we can't probably stop that, but at least let people aware that's driving, that they may jump out at you at any time. Because there's going to be some accidents eventually. They hit Cooper and Beamer, and they just stop and head right out. There's people lined up letting Bambi cross. You know, we have to let them have their way on that street. We can't do anything against them.
Right.
But it's getting to be a dangerous situation. That's what I'm talking about. It's getting to be dangerous.
We'll do what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, pal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Wingard with the Division of Banana Brink Engineering, and I'm here to give you an update on our progress on the SAW grant. As you remember, the SAW grant is for sanitary sewer and stormwater asset management planning. So far, most of our efforts have been in structure evaluations. That's both storm sewer catch basins and sanitary sewer manholes. I put a map in front of everybody. It kind of shows you our progress to date. The blue circles are the structures we've evaluated so far. The red structures are the work we have yet to do. We've roughly inspected 450 structures out of 2,900. So we're about a sixth of the way done. We still have some work left to do, but we're making some pretty good headway. Our guys are getting roughly about twenty or twenty-two structures a day for evaluations. That entails popping a cover off, looking down, drawing a sketch of the structure, pipes coming in, pipes coming out, getting pipe sizes, taking pictures, and also doing an evaluation under the NASCO guidelines. And NASCO is a certification that all of our technicians have gone through. So we're still working on that, and we've got a lot of work left to do. We're going to be continuing through the fall into the early winter on those, and depending on the weather and how secure it is, we'll continue to work through the winter, unless some of them are frozen shut, we can't get them open, so... So that's where we are on the storm and sanitary structure evaluations. Another prong of our work is going to be starting soon, and that's going to be the survey. That's going to take place probably in early September, where our survey group will be coming in and actually surveying every one of these structures that we're evaluating. So in the end, we will have a map of the entire system on state plane coordinates with an X, a Y, and a Z coordinate. So it'll all be tied in together. That will go towards making our maps, where we kind of connect the dots and see where the water flows from structure to structure. So again, that survey work will probably start in September. The other prong is the plant evaluation. Several people from our process group came down in June, met with Jim, and did the initial plant evaluation, kind of got a tour of the plant, took back some documents and some data, and started formulating their preliminary asset management inventory. We kind of put that a little bit on the back burner, anticipating the hiring of a chief operator down there, and I understand from what Jim tells me that has just happened. So we will shift that back on the front burner and plan on getting a crew down there to do the actual detailed evaluation inspection of the plant. That's probably, again, going to happen, I would think, probably early September, and we've scheduled two to three full days to be down there and do a thorough plant inspection with Jim and the new operator. Those are the big items right now. I can answer any questions now, and I'll be staying after the meeting to answer questions then as well. Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Comment? The, you've done ninety percent of your work in precinct for us and the council. The citizens who have had contact with the people who are low traffic have stated that they have been very kind and very...
I'm glad to hear that. Glad to hear that.
Any further questions? We thank you very much.
Okay, and I plan on coming every two or three months to give you folks an update.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Did I say Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts?
You said Cub Scouts.
Yeah, good.
Are there any more citizens' comments? If not, I'll ask for an adjournment to the executive session in my room.
So moved.
Support.
See you there in five minutes.
No voiceover?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Thank you.